Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the mayoral inauguration of Mayor Richard Brunst and the swearing-in ceremonies for our esteemed city council members Brent R. Sumner, Thomas W. McDonald, and David M. Spencer. I am Matthew Holland, president of Utah Valley University, and it's my great honor and privilege to welcome you and to serve as master of ceremonies today. We greatly value our relationship with Orem City at UVU, and we believe that Orem and the university both individually and collectively play a central, essential, and vital role in one of the fastest-growing and most dynamic areas in the entire country. And together, we ensure that UVU has a viable and promising home and future, and that the city has an innovative and well-prepared workforce and a whole set of wonderful community activities from athletics to the arts. So, in that spirit, it's my honor to be here as part of these ceremonies today. Our program will proceed as follows. The invocation will be offered by President Kristi Killpak, president of the Utah Orim Mission of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Following the prayer, the Orem Public Safety Color Guard will post the colors, and Commander Bradley G. Prescott of the Orem Post 72nd American Legion will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We would like to recognize and welcome all of our community friends and business leaders and citizens who are here today. We take special note of the attendance of Mayor Richard Brunst and his wife Tammy, Councilmember Brent R. Sumner and Becky Sumner, Councilmember Thomas W. McDonald and Kay McDonald, Councilmember David M. Spencer and Julie Spencer, Councilmember Sam Lentz and Brittany Lentz, Councilmember Mark Sestrand and Shelley Sestrand, Councilmember Debbie Lorette and Jim, President Sister Killpak, Bradley Prescott, Jamie Davidson, Orem City Manager, Judge Reed S. Parkin from the Orem City Justice Court, who will perform the swearing-in ceremonies today, Linda P. Walton, chaplain of the Utah Valley Interfaith Association, former mayor James T. Evans, Utah County Commissioners Bill Lee and Nathan Ivy, State House Representative Kevin Stratton and Brad Daw and Val Peterson, State Senator Dan Hemmert, many of our former mayors and city mayors, as well as state dignitaries who are here today. We welcome all of you, and we will proceed to that point in the program at this point.
Our beloved Heavenly Father, as we gather on this momentous occasion, grateful for our many blessings in this new year and the opportunity that we each have to celebrate freedom, the enjoyment of community, and blessings of being thy children, we are thankful for this beautiful day in which we can be here and celebrate the blessing of those who volunteer their time and energy to bless this wonderful city. We acknowledge thy hand in our lives. We pray that we might, in the coming days, continue in our lives of service and kindness to each other. In this community of families and individuals, we pray that we might reach out and have lifting hands, that we might share and be considerate, and respect each other's individuality as well as the common goals that we all share. We acknowledge the blessings of this day. We thank thee for all things, and pray that the proceedings of this event will take place in a manner that will bestow thy peace and generous blessings upon all who work herein, upon this city, and those who perform the role of this city government, the role of first responders, and those all who volunteer in any way and serve as citizens and as employees of this great part of thy area. We again thank thee for all things, and open this time unto thee in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Will the audience please rise? Company, fall in. Attention! Forward, march! Company, halt! Prepare colors. Post colors. Present arms! Would the audience please repeat the pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms! Company, face! Forward, march! The audience may be seated. Thank you to the Orem Fire Department Honor Guard and to Commander Prescott for those opening ceremonies. We'll now be privileged to hear "God Bless America," performed by Amanda Flinders, the Miss Orem of 2017. She will be followed by remarks from Jamie Davidson, Orem City Manager. Following Jamie Davidson's remarks, we will invite Judge Reed Parkin forward for the swearing-in of the city council officers Brent Sumner, Tom McDonald, and David Spencer.
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. My home sweet home.
Amanda, thank you for that wonderful music. Mayor Brunst, members of the city council, employees of the city of Orem, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. I am delighted to be here today to recognize and support Mayor Brunst and councilmembers Brent Sumner, David Spencer, and Tom McDonald in their reelection to the Orem City Council. It has been a pleasure serving with these gentlemen over the past four years, and on behalf of city administration and the employees of the city of Orem, we wish you all congratulations and our continued support moving forward. In contemplating what I might share this afternoon, I've considered those who have served in the past, in hopes that their experience and example may serve as a benchmark or as a guide for the future. Now, in doing this, I share one caution spoken by the great Thomas Jefferson, who said, quote, "I like the dreams of the future better than the history of the past," close quote. I believe our future is bright, but I also know that we can learn from the past and the legacies of those who served before these good men who are seated on the rostrum or on the podium here today. With this in mind, what might we learn from those who have served the city of Orem, specifically from the city's mayors over the past 25-plus years? Mayor Joyce Johnson set a tone of community engagement before the dawn of social media, group texts, or online neighborhood tools. Mayor Johnson brought residents together in taking ownership of neighborhood challenges and working towards solutions for all within the city of Orem. Her example in this area served as a reminder of the need to consider neighborhood input in community decisions. Mayor Stella Welch made reaching out to the underserved a focus of her tenure as mayor. Her involvement in the development of parks and recreation amenities in new areas of the city, as well as her focus on affordable housing by way of such organizations as Habitat for Humanity, set a tone of inclusiveness in the city as she shared the message that there is a place for everybody here within the city of Orem. Mayor Joe Nelson was recognized as a peacemaker and someone who could still the angry voices of citizens on both sides of any issue. He played an instrumental role in the city's economic sustainability by securing and retaining long-term tenants at the university mall. He helped the community to understand that its vitality as an organization and ability to provide necessary services is the result of a healthy and a vibrant tax base. Mayor Chris Yondo, though his time as mayor was brief, he served as a unifier in bringing together the council after the death of Mayor Nelson. He reminded the community and council that success in elected office is best accomplished by working together and striving for common goals and outcomes. Mayor Jerry Washburn was the consummate diplomat and statesman. During his time in office, he was tagged in an affectionate way by one of the state's congressional leaders as, quote, "the godfather of Utah County politics," close quote. He had an ability to bring people together across neighborhoods, municipalities, and even regions of the state for the common good of our community, Utah County, and the state of Utah as a whole. He was influential in the development of the city's transportation system and its street lighting program, both now being the envy of many other cities. He suggested that a community's success rests in its ability to provide core services to its residents. Mayor Jim Evans's two years in office after the death of Mayor Washburn was an example of servant leadership based on a willingness to give back to a community he had previously served but continues to love. He made listening the focus of his time in office, always hesitating to close a public hearing in a city council meeting for fear that someone's voice would not be heard. His example suggested to all that public officials follow and act upon the will of the people, all people. Everyone has a voice in the decisions at the local level. Over the past four years, as noted, I've had the good pleasure of serving by the side of Mayor Brunst and those who will be sworn in again today as members of the Orem City Council. In all respects, these men have carried forward the legacies and examples of those who have gone before them as leaders of the city of Orem. Like those of the past, they have struggled with difficult decisions in the face of opposition. They have listened to the concerns of all residents, whether those concerns have been tied to neighborhood issues, infrastructure, or city finances. In regards to Mayor Brunst, he is recognized today as a regional leader and advocate in addressing transportation concerns in our valley, and has championed the need to reinvest in our community's infrastructure. He is willing to spend time with any and all who will visit with him, and you have not met a stronger champion of Utah Valley University or University Place than Mayor Brunst. As we gather today, in my estimation, these men have carried forward with resolve and determination the legacies of those before them. Their success rests in their continued ability to work together, and I have no doubt great things await the city as a result of their service and leadership. Today, we recognize them for their service, but also celebrate our future as a city, one that is poised for success into the future. Congratulations again, Mayor Brunst, councilmembers McDonald, Spencer, and Sumner. You have our confidence and support. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's my honor as Judge Parkin to be able to take and measure the oath of office to our duly elected officials in this great city. And we'll do it in the order prescribed there in the program, starting with Mr. Brent Sumner. Mr. Sumner, if you'd join me here.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear:
I do solemnly swear:
That I'll support, obey, and defend:
That I'll support, obey, and defend:
The Constitution of the United States:
The Constitution of the United States:
The Constitution of the State of Utah:
The Constitution of the State of Utah:
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Orem:
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Orem:
And that I'll discharge the duties of my office:
And I'll discharge the duties of my office:
With fidelity:
With fidelity:
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, now here's Salim Morris.
Mr. Sumner will make it official as well and do the signatures right here. You can't read them, but there it is. Those are both government documents. You can't read them, but there it is.
It's an honor to be here today, and Amanda, I still have chills running up my spine on that song, "God Bless America." Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for participating on this program today and taking time out from their day to come in and enjoy this inauguration, and I appreciate it very much. President Holland, I know you're on a very busy schedule, and I appreciate you emceeing this inauguration. Having worked there at Utah Valley University and retiring there for 11 years, I can testify and I'll endorse and support that it's a great university, and it continues to be great, especially under the leadership of President Holland, and thank you very much, President Holland. Judge Parkin, I don't see you very often, and that might be a good thing, but thank you for participating today. Mayor Brunst and city council, thank you for your dedication to our city. I've enjoyed serving with you this past few years, four years, and I look at great things to come in the next four years, and we don't always agree, but the thing is, we can come to some conclusion or some middle ground. Above all, the citizens of Orem, I want to thank you for attending, and I can't let my remarks go by without thanking President and CEO of the CERA, Adam Robertson, and his staff for this fine facility. The CERA continues to grow for young and old. It's for all ages. It's for all the community. CERA is truly a gem in our community. It's been a privilege and a rewarding experience running for reelection, and I want to thank the citizens for re-electing me for another term. During my campaign, many, many friends helped with advertising, door hangers, flyers, signs, donations, and just a pat on the back to build the confidence. If those that run for any office, even at city council level, it's exhausting, and I appreciate all their support. Some of the finest people I know and have gotten to know over the past few years is our city staff and city employees. It's not easy to run a city. I have full confidence in Jamie Davidson and his direction with the city, and again, I just learned so much. It's so, so much work to keep a city the best it can be, as Jamie has done. Thank you very much. In case you haven't heard, the word is out: Orem is a great place to live, raise a family, and do business. However, we must keep Orem the best city it can be. When you leave today, you probably won't remember much about, especially my remarks, but just remember two things: change and involved. The two words, change and involved. I've witnessed the growth of Orem over my lifetime. I have learned with some struggle and some hesitation, we, I, must accept change and be willing to put that change into a positive light and direction. No doubt about it in my mind, Orem will continue to grow and change, and citizens should get involved with those changes. This can help keep Orem's quality of life second to none. Past several years, the city council has made some very tough decisions concerning our community. The seven people on our city council bring seven different business and life experiences. However, we need citizens to get involved with your views and experiences. Many times, I've knocked on doors, talking to citizens and getting their input for an upcoming council vote that could affect their neighborhood or business. Your views help elected officials make the best possible decision that can be made. I encourage you to call us, email us, knock on our doors, but please have a voice in Orem. Citizens can help us keep Orem the best place to live and raise a family. Remember, accept change and get involved with our community. In closing, I'd like to read a quote you've probably all heard from one of the greatest presidents of the United States, President John F. Kennedy. Let us not seek the Republican answers or the Democratic answers.
Mr. Sumner will make it official as well and do the signatures right here. You can't read them, but there it is. Those are both government documents. You can't read them, but there it is. Please give us Salim Morris.
It's an honor to be here today, and Amanda, I still have chills running up my spine on that song, "God Bless America." Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for participating on this program today and taking time out from their day to come and enjoy this inauguration, and I appreciate it very much. President Holland, I know you're on a very busy schedule, and I appreciate you emceeing this inauguration. Having worked there at Utah Valley University and retiring there for 11 years, I can testify and I'll endorse and support that it's a great university and it continues to be great, especially under the leadership of President Holland, and thank you very much, President Holland. Judge Parkin, I don't see you very often, and that might be a good thing, but thank you for participating today. Mayor Brunst and City Council, thank you for your dedication to our city. I've enjoyed serving with you this past few years, four years, and I look at great things to come in the next four years, and we don't always agree, but the thing is, we can come to some conclusion or some middle ground. Above all, citizens of Orem, I want to thank you for attending, and I can't let my remarks go by without thanking President and CEO of the CERA, Adam Robertson, and his staff for this fine facility. The CERA continues to grow for young and old. It's for all ages. It's for all the community. CERA is truly a gem in our community. It's been a privilege and a rewarding experience running for reelection, and I want to thank the citizens for reelecting me for another term. During my campaign, many, many friends helped with advertising, door hangers, flyers, signs, donations, and just a pat on the back to build the confidence. If those that run for any office, even at city council level, it's exhausting, and I appreciate all their support. Some of the finest people I know and have gotten to know over the past few years is our city staff and city employees. It's not easy to run a city. I have full confidence in Jamie Davidson and his direction with the city, and again, I just learned so much. It's so, so much work to keep a city the best it can be, as Jamie has done. Thank you very much. In case you haven't heard, the word is out: Orem is a great place to live, raise a family, and do business. However, we must keep Orem the best city it can be. When you leave today, you probably won't remember much about, especially my remarks, but just remember two things: change and involved. The two words, change and involved. I've witnessed the growth of Orem over my lifetime. I have learned with some struggle and some hesitation, we, I, must accept change and be willing to put that change into a positive light and direction. No doubt about it in my mind, Orem will continue to grow and change, and citizens should get involved with those changes. This can help keep Orem's quality of life second to none. Past several years, the City Council has made some very tough decisions concerning our community. The seven people on our City Council bring seven different business and life experiences. However, we need citizens to get involved with your views and experiences. Many times, I've knocked on doors, talking to citizens and getting their input for an upcoming council vote that could affect their neighborhood or business. Your views help elected officials make the best possible decision that can be made. I encourage you to call us, email us, knock on our doors, but please have a voice in Orem. Citizens can help us keep Orem the best place to live and raise a family. Remember, accept change and get involved with our community. In closing, I'd like to read a quote you've probably all heard from one of the greatest presidents of the United States, President John F. Kennedy. Let us not seek the Republican answers or the Democratic answers, but the right answer. Let us not seek to fix the blame for the past. Let us accept our own responsibilities for the future. Looking forward, I'm excited to serve. And again, I thank you for all your support, and especially at this time, I'd like to thank my family and my wife Becky. They're just a rock in our, in our family, and I love them so much, and they really support myself and the things that, crazy things that sometimes I do, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sumner. We look forward to your continued contributions. Now, if you'll join me in witnessing the CERA is sworn in and oath of office of our next duly-elected council member, Thomas W. McDonald. If you'd repeat after me, please.
Of course.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Orem.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Orem.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Elected officials, distinguished guests, citizens of Orem, and ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon and thank you for being here today. I would not be here today without the encouragement of many good people four years ago to run for office and again last year to run for reelection. My good wife has been my strongest supporter, advocate, and sometimes mental health counselor, and I thank her and all who have helped in any way publicly today for your support. Thank you. Thanks to Mayor Brunst, Jamie Davidson, and members of the committee and the CERA for again planning this event. Thanks to President Matthew Holland, who agreed to emcee this event one more time. I appreciate those who provided music, the oath of office, the pledge of allegiance, and the presentation of colors. Thank you for your willingness to serve. We are so blessed to live in a free country where we have the right to choose who will represent us. This country was founded on a strong belief in a supreme being, and in that spirit, I'm grateful to two longtime friends, President Chris Kilpak and Chaplain Linda Walton, for being willing to offer prayers and to call upon the power of the Almighty to sustain us as we serve this great city. I believe that taking the oath of office is an obligation to serve others. Previous opportunities I've had to serve were reverent and quiet experiences, not an event like today. That being said, regardless of how the opportunity to serve is received, I am committed to do my best to make Orem better. We understand it's a wonderful place, but its growth has to be managed. I pledge to work hard with my fellow elected officials, with city staff, and the citizens of this city. I will attempt to work completely with integrity, wisdom, and kindness. Some believe that kindness isn't a necessary attribute in public life. From time to time, we see that demonstrated. I take exception with that idea and echo the words of the Dalai Lama, who said, "Be kind whenever possible," and then added, "It is always possible." Today, we stand on the shoulders of elected officials who have gone before us, as Jamie spoke about, and I thank them for their sacrifice and service to the city. I had the opportunity to moan many of them personally and watch them serve. I thank them for setting a good example of true service. I mentioned four years ago that I was raised in a home where it was never permitted to speak evil of the elected officials. Each night, as we gathered as a family to pray, we would pray for the President of the United States and the other elected officials. We prayed for our leaders would be guided by the hand of providence without regard to their political platforms. Today, I ask for that support from you, for your continued prayers, for your commitment to work together for the good of Orem. If we do that, I'm sure these next four years will be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McDonald. Wise words. If you now join me in witnessing the oath of office given to duly-elected David M. Spencer. If you'd please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Orem.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Orem.
And that I'll discharge the duties of my office.
And I'll discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations. I'm the youngest of the council, the mayor, but I start to put my reading glasses on soon. So I am truly humbled to be here today. It's an awesome experience in my life. I want to thank Adam Robertson and the kind folks of the CERA for hosting this event and for their hospitality. President Holland, for your remarks today. The American Legion, Mountain View High School Choir, Miss Orem for your participation. I want to thank city staff, our public safety color guard, and the volunteers that have made this event possible. I want to thank everyone for coming out this afternoon, my wife. What a great support she's been, and my family for their support. Our campaign volunteers, and the many residents that donated and put up signs in their yard. We really appreciate your support and confidence and trust. Four years ago, I took the oath of office for the first time to serve the citizens of Orem as your elected representative on the city council. I took the oath and promise that I made to you during the campaign. I took the oath and the promises I made during the campaign very seriously. I love serving you, and it's a great honor for me. This gathering today is really a celebration of our democracy, our ability as citizens to have a voice in our local government. Our God-given rights to have representative government has been fought for and are currently protected today by the brave men and women of our nation's armed forces. If you're an active or retired member of the military, would you please stand so we could recognize you? Also, the police officers and the fire officers. We appreciate your service and the freedoms that we enjoy today, because freedom is not free, as we all know. My father is a military veteran. He served in Vietnam and retired up to 28 years in the Air Force. I would not be standing here today if it was not for my father and my mother, setting the example of service to our country and community for me to follow. Thank you, I'm in that. Local government can affect almost every aspect of your daily life, and it's arguably the most important. As a council, we hear issues of property rights, safety, utilities, and roads. I will continue to listen and be a voice for your concerns, an advocate for transparency, work to solve our ongoing issues with utopia, population growth, continue to decrease our debt, and keep taxes low. I am humbled to have another four years serving you on the city council. Together, we can make Orem, or together, we can keep Orem moving in the right direction. God bless you, the city of Orem, and our great nation. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Spencer. Thank you for the reminder to recognize those who sacrifice and give us our freedom. President Holland has asked me, as a master of ceremonies, to continue on with giving a ministry of the oath of office to duly-elected Richard F. Brunst Jr., one that we're all familiar with, a friend of all and a friend of the city. Mr. Brunst, Mayor Brunst, if you'd please join me. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
That I'll support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I'll support the laws and ordinances of the city of Orem.
And that I'll support the laws and ordinances of the city of Orem.
And I'll discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I'll discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
It's great to have the dignitaries that are here. Thank you, President Holland, for doing the master ceremonies. Appreciate President Kilpak being here from the Orem City Mission. Appreciate very much our own Orem Public Safety Color Guard, Bradley Prescott, the commander of Orem Post 72, American Legion. It's always great to have you here with us. Amanda Flinders, we love that song. We love you, and we love what our royalty does for our city. Appreciate having the remarks from Jamie Davidson. Appreciate having the remarks from Brett Sumner, Thomas McDonald, and David Spencer. I would like to make a few remarks, and I just want to mention that it's a wonderful opportunity, most of all, to have the citizens of Orem here for this event. When we look at what we have in the city and the community, it's really a city and community of us all, and we're all here to help it progress and move forward. When I think of the council members that I've served with for the last four years, the ones that have just been reelected, I just want to tell them thank you. I have respect and appreciation for them. The three of them are leaders in business, they're leaders in their community, they're leaders in their church, they're leaders in their families, and their commitment, service, and dedication to our community is without, has great value to me, and I appreciate what they do. It's interesting that local laws are meant to protect free speech, property rights, and the health and safety of our citizens. Local officials, such as the ones that have been administered to today and sworn in, should take the laws in equity and justice to keep peace and harmony in our city. Today, we agreed, as we were sworn in, to support, obey, and defend the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of the State of Utah. I would like to read just a paragraph from each one of those constitutions to let you know what it is that we agreed to support, obey, and defend. U.S. Constitution from September 1787, the preamble, I want to read a part of that. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and to our, and our property." I believe that supporting the U.S. Constitution is one of the main things that we do as those who serve in public office, and we're here to help our citizens and our community be a part of that. The Utah State Constitution, under Article I, Section 2, as adopted in May of 1895, states, "All political power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority, on their authority for their equal protection and benefit." When I think about the laws that we are asked to pass and the laws that we are asked to defend, I look at this as a great opportunity for our community. Our community is a community of laws. We live a peaceful life because we obey the law. We have a great community here. The one thing that I've noticed is how wonderful the people are and how strong our families are, and much of our peace and tranquility comes from the kind of people that reside here within the city of Orem. As I've walked the streets, I've noticed several things. I've noticed that our streets are clean. I'm thankful to our staff for that and to our residents. I've noticed that our neighborhoods are safe. Again, I'm thankful to our police and fire for the help that they give us in this area and for the neighbors that live there. I notice that we have a diverse economic base. I appreciate those who are in business within the city. Having a strong economic base allows us, as a city, to have a strong government. Thank you to all those who have given their service and courage and strength to build a strong community before us, as Jamie has mentioned. So now, it is up to us to be wise and good stewards of this foundation. It is up to us to build on this legacy to pass on to those that follow. Our wonderful city and great place to raise families, it's up to us to keep it that way. It's up to those who have been elected and who now serve to show courage, to show hope, to show enthusiasm, and strength to be the builders of a strong foundation for the future ahead. May service be our watch cry, may love for our community be our guide, and may courage be our beacon. Let us continue on to make Orem a beautiful city for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brunst and members of the city council. Alice Longworth was the daughter of Theodore Roosevelt, and she said, I'm sure, very lovingly of her father, that he always wanted to be the bride at every wedding and the corpse at every funeral. And I think that was her loving way of saying that he liked the limelight, and he was a great, I'm an admirer of Theodore Roosevelt. He was a great leader, did a lot of great things. But I can say of Mayor Brunst and these fine members of the city council, all of whom I know personally and well, and both on a professional basis and a personal basis, is these are not men who are in it for the limelight for themselves. Every one of them has a vision for what this city can be, and I don't need to add to the words that they've shared. They've said it very eloquently about the kind of community that they want to help build, and that's what they're about. It's about the community, it's not about them, and in that way, you're the essence of public service, and so it's a great honor for me to be part of this and to be part of a ceremony that I think it should also be remarked that each one of these individuals has been reelected. This is a signal from the community of a vote of confidence in what they have done already and what they will yet go on to do. I think that's a remarkable statement on the part of our community to each of you and what you will do moving forward. Certainly, we feel that at Utah Valley University, but obviously, the rest of Orem feels much the same way, and we commend you for that. Thank you for letting us be part of this very important solemn occasion. Thank you for letting us be part of this very important solemn occasion that is part of our constitutional responsibility to do, and we couldn't be more grateful for allowing us to participate this day. With that, we would like to conclude this meeting with a musical presentation, "I Vow To Thee, My Country," by the Mountain View High School Choir, and the day will be followed by a benediction by Lynda P. Walton, Chaplain, the Utah Valley Interfaith Association.
Let's stand together as we pray. Good afternoon, Father. We are so grateful to have a chance to be together and talk to you. We are grateful for the freedom of assembly, for the freedom of speech, for the freedom of religion, for the freedom of the press, all of the things that we enjoy, Father. We are so grateful that you have given those to us. And today, Father, we have some newly-elected individuals that are here to protect that. And Father, we would pray that your Holy Spirit will be with each of the four men that have taken their oath today, that they will remember the Bill of Rights, the Constitution, the other important things that we value, and that they will represent this community the very best that they can with your Spirit. Father, we're grateful for everyone in this room, and each one of us can make a difference in what goes on in our community, and so we pray that you will direct us in the way we need to go. Thank you, Father, for our country and for our state, for our county, and for this city, and we pray, amen.
Amen.